So at this point, I will go ahead and have the actually. Do we have anyone that could do the invocation? Or if not, at this point, I will ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Legions, please. Okay, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic.
Republic, for which we stand. One nation.
Liberty.
The mutual liberty of this world.
All right. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you very much, everyone, for being here this evening. At this point, as we start the city council meeting, I will ask our deputy city clerk to please take roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Alejandro Avila.
She will be excused for this meeting.
Yeah. Councilmember Ayala.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
She will be joining us shortly.
Yes, that's right, thank you, Shannon.
Mayor Fernando.
President.
Mayor Lozano.
President, thank you very much, Deputy City Clerk Robles. All right, so at this point, before we start, I want to go, I want to. Close on behalf of a good friend of mine, former mayor of the city of Sabina Sidalgo, where my mom was born. Polo Gonzalez, my condolences goes out to his family. Great person, contributed immensely to that city of 30,000. All right, any council members wishing to close on anyone's behalf? All righty, okay, so at this point, I'll go ahead and open up the public communication. I'll refer over to our deputy city clerk to contact, how many callers do we have, deputy city clerk?
Mayor, I believe a few people are calling in on number four, so you might want to announce that. We didn't have the time in closed session to discuss that adequately, and it will be held over till another meeting.
Okay, that's fine, all righty. We keep it, that we keep in with the protocol as set forth. All right, so at this point, our deputy city clerk will contact the first caller.
It's about 10 speakers, Mayor, and the first caller is Mr. John Reel.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Reels, Manuel Lozano, good evening, sir, I'm calling you regarding the public communication, and this is your time, you have approximately three minutes.
Okay, here we go. Okay, I will start with you, Mayor. Been lying to the citizens of Ballan Park for the past 10, 15 years, okay? You dare just to do dirty politics here and there? And get payoffs and everything. You've been corrupt for so many years, it's ridiculous. One of the things that you gotta understand, the public right here now, all the neighborhoods, they're upset. Why are you running for mayor again? Okay? Then you, when I asked for a translator, you put Paul Lulu to do the translation, she doesn't know how to translate. And another thing, did you give Mr. Taro the three extra minutes so they can translate into Spanish? That's what the people in the neighborhood want to know. And another thing, how come we cannot get 10 minutes like you did? Give that letter that. One of your little cops sent in, and Jean Ayala read it for 10 minutes. You broke every rule from the book. You know, the worst part of it is that all of you, starting with you, the lawyer. And everybody in the city council, that's the three minutes to stop us right away. You tell us that's your three minutes. But that night, you didn't even stop her until she finished the whole thing. You know, it's a little ridiculous the way you're running the city. And another thing, what were you doing in TJ? With Maria? You know, those are the things that, you know, a lot of people, you gotta stop lying to the people of Ballan Park. We have how many lawsuits right now? Three chiefs and another 10 probably, and then Susie, and then now I know why you got rid of Amy. Because she wouldn't go with you guys. She wouldn't sign off. So it's time for you to step down. And let the other people take over, the new people, we need new people, new blood in there, you already used of being corrupt. I didn't want to ask for a translator today because, like I said, you know, Paul Lulu, she cannot translate for us.
All right, thank you, all right, his time, his time is up, so I, did I hear him right, a legal counsel that he did not want a translator?
That is correct, Mayor, he did not want a translator.
And let's note that for the record, Deputy City Clerk, thank you very much, all right, we'll go on to the next caller.
The next one is Mr. Greg Tuttle.
Thank you, appreciate that. Hello, hey, Mr. Tuttle, this is Manny, good evening, this is the public communication, you have approximately three minutes.
Okay, I have asked for a translator, and the city attorney, since I spoke English, he told me, I don't get a translator. Here that the council all speaks English, I want the residents to listen to the audio and hear my speech. This is a racist thing, Manny. Because I'm white and I speak English. Why is Jean Ayala getting a car allowance of $500 a month when she doesn't even have a car or a driver's license? I have prepared papers that I'm filing with the DA's office for fraud and a felony case because she is collecting this money fraudently. Also, why is she using police officers to escort her around town? I have pictures of her bragging about it. Due to the city's bad and corrupt city attorney, the city is in over 22 lawsuits costing hundreds of thousands of dollars a month to fight. For instance, the city did a revenge lawsuit on ex-housing director Susie Reyes. After she filed the lawsuit for wrongful termination, the city lost the lawsuit against her. And the city attorneys were, audit, were sanctioned $6,500, I'll bet you weren't told that, for filing a frivolous lawsuit. Plus attorney fees. Your city is drowning in attorney fees because of Teforia hiring morons and doing revenge lawsuits. Your city manager keeps laying off people and demoting people to keep up with the high pay that they need, but they don't care about the employees. Let's give some examples, Shannon makes $374,100, plans to retire very soon, building a retirement home out of state. Rose Tam makes over $300,748, no CPA license. Manny Correo, $293,464. Sam Gutierrez makes $248,940, and he didn't even pass his testing. You had to hire an extra person in order to sign out papers for him. Council pay with perp $75,000 a year. That means we're paying $3,125 per meeting for you people. Your city and employee deserves better leadership. That means this election, you all must go and clean up this corruption. It's disgusting. That's all I've got to say, and I should have this translated in Spanish for three minutes, like the law says in the Brown Act. If I don't, there'll be a lawsuit coming next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. All right, so at this point, I will request that Deputy City Clerk, please translate Mr. Tuttle's message.
I'm begging for alguien que tradujiera en español esto es racista porque el abogado me dijo que no podía. Quiero que la gente que esté oyendo pueda oír esto en español. Quiero preguntar por qué esta Gina Ayala ganando o colectando dinero para el carro si ella no tiene ni carro ni licencia. Por qué dejan que ella maneje con los policías? Están gastando dinero en eso. Tenemos muchas demandas, estamos pagando mucho dinero porque tenemos demandas de muchos, de empleados también. Y pagando por el abogado mucho dinero. Tenemos que elegir a otras personas este, esta elección y sacarlos de oficina. Y si esto no es traducido, traducido en español, vamos a tener una demanda de mí a la siguiente junta.
All right, thank you very much, Deputy City Clerk, so we'll go on to the next caller.
Here this is Minerva Romero. On my item four.
Welcome to Verizon Wireless, you're calling now.
Would you like me to try her again and move on to the next?
Yeah, move on to the next.
The next is Junior Arezola.
What's the last name?
Arezola. And this is regarding the Public Works Reorganization.
He's an employee, am I correct?
It says he's a resident.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Hello, Mr. Arezola, this is Manuel Lozano, Mayor Ballan Park, how are you this evening? Can you hear me? Hello? Are you able to hear me?
I'll look, let me try him one more time.
All right, thank you.
Please leave your message.
All right, we'll go ahead to the next caller, thank you.
Caller is Joseph McKenty.
Very much. Hi, hello, this is Manuel Lozano, Mayor Ballan Park, how are you this evening?
Okay, good.
That's good, I'm calling you because I believe you had registered to speak at the public session, so you have approximately three minutes.
Okay. Oh, right now, sorry, right now?
Yes, yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, well, I'm calling to ask you to accept the union proposal about the reorganization of public works. This so-called reorganization is nothing more than a demotion about to force city employees in thinly disguised form of retaliation for union activities. I'm asking you to wire rate all affected employees to avoid disruption of any city services, save city employees from negative financial impacts, and eliminate any potential for litigation over unlawful changes to city employee status. Furthermore, we oppose the proposal to outsource the landscaping operation in the Department of Public Works. The city's argument that privateizing, privateizing our member jobs is necessary to achieve. Hello?
Yes, we could hear you, go ahead.
The cost saving to the city in the context of COVID-19 crisis or any legitimate fiscal necessity is just false. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and your input will be registered with the city. Have a good evening. Thank you. All righty, we're moving on with public communication.
The next one is Adam Gero.
Thank you. This is Manuel Lozano, Mayor of the City Ballan Park, how are you this evening?
Good, how are you, sir?
We're good, fine, thank you, sir. This is the public communication, so you have approximately three minutes for input.
Okay, the reason I'm here is to ask that you accept the union's proposal about the reorganization of public works.
Yes, sir.
So-called reorganization is nothing more than a demotion about to force city employees in a thinly disguised form of retaliation for union activities. I am asking that you wire rate all affected employees to avoid disruption of any city services, save city employees from negative financial impacts, and eliminate any potential for litigation over lawful, unlawful changes to city employee status. Furthermore, we oppose the proposal to outsource the landscaping operation in the Department of Public Works. The city argument that privatizing our members' jobs is necessary to achieve significant cost savings to the city. In the context of COVID-19 crisis or any legitimate fiscal necessity is just false. Also included is our petition of no confidence. We've undersigned employers, the city of Ballan Park commits this petition to the city to voice no confidence. And Ballan Park's executive management, the city's system, the resolving grievance is broken. As the city manager has the final say, and he has ruled against employees on two items where our MOU clearly says otherwise. We must have binding arbitration with a qualified neutral. Furthermore, the city manager and public works director have proposed reorganization, reorganization plan that appears to attempt to harm SDIU members who have been challenging their decision. In addition, these affected members will be forced to bump and lose city, causing chaos in the organization, and encourage quality employees to find work elsewhere. Finally, we disagree with the city's desire to contract out landscaping when the city can hire and fill open positions designated to do this work. Oftentimes, contracting out isn't an actual long-term costing measure and leaves below standard work. We urge you guys to act in good faith and address these root concerns.
All right, okay, thank you very much, appreciate the call, that will be noted and recorded by the city. All right, at this point, we'll move on to the next caller.
Caller is Steven Palacios.
All righty.
Please leave your message for six, two.
All right, thank you, we'll go on to the next caller.
Caller is Mario Mari.
Thank you.
Hello?
This is Manuel Lozano, Mayor of the City Ballan Park, how are you this evening?
Hi, I'm doing good, how are you doing?
We're good, fine, thank you, I'm calling, this is the public communication time, so you have approximately three minutes here to go ahead and provide your input. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, go ahead. Yes, go ahead, this is your, this is your time, you could go ahead and provide the input for public communication.
Oh, the letter?
Oh, this is, you called, the city hall, this is public communication, did you want to share anything with the city council?
Well, yes, that's supposed to be there, and I guess, hold on.
Okay.
I have a letter for the, for union.
Okay, you could read it, did you want to read it?
Yes.
Or do you want to submit it?
Okay. You tell me when I can start.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, right now, thank you.
I'm calling right today to ask you to accept this union proposal about the reorganization of the public works. So this call, the reorganization is nothing more than a demotion of, of, of forcing the employees. And is, is that saying? For a relationship with union activities. I'm asking you to wire rate all affected employees to avoid disruption, any of the city services. Save city employees for negative financial impact and eliminate any potential for litigation over unlawful change to city employee status. Furthermore, we oppose the proposal to out, outsource the landscaping operation in the Department of Public Works. The city arrangement that provides practices of members' jobs as necessary to communication, cost savings for city workers. Maybe in the context of coal making prices and any delay, physical necessary is just false. Okay?
All right, thank you very much, appreciate that. All righty, Madam City Clerk, Deputy City Clerk.
Thank you so much.
We'll move on to the next caller.
Okay, the next caller is. Oh, sorry, I actually. Ralph Benya, but I don't think he provided his phone number.
Oh, okay, we'll go on to the next one.
Um, that was the last.
So we don't have a number for the last caller. All righty, okay, well, first, first of all, I want to thank you very much, and let me also state, Deputy City Clerk, you do a wonderful job. And it's unfortunate that some people will get on the public communication and criticize and so on and so forth. Totally unprofessional, however, as we will state over and over and over, the First Amendment, the Constitution allows anyone to come on these airwaves and fabricate outright, outright, just lie, let me just say it that way. We have no recourse whatsoever. To Mr. Reels, once again, I will ask you, if you have any documentation, any photos you refer to as corruption. Please bring that forward. This city council has done a lot for the city of Ballan Park, and tremendous, and despite the pandemic, which I hope there is a solution for it sometime soon, the city has been doing good. We reached out to numerous community members, homeless, and providing different types of vouchers that we'll be explaining here today, so. It's campaign time, so it's understandable that you're, this type, this individual will get out and fabricate information, that's the unfortunate part. Personal attacks to council member Jean Ayala unacceptable, but again, that's, council member, that's part of the First Amendment Constitution, so that person has a right to say and do whatever they want. It was mentioned that was a TJ, no, I wish I could go, but I'll have to wait maybe sometime in 2021, so maybe they saw someone that looked like me out there. But nevertheless, the city's business is moving on with great success, and I want to thank all the staff members. So at this point, I will go ahead and go over to, well, at this point, we're closing the public communication. All right, so we have the agenda, we have the first items, we have the consent calendar, I will pull item number five. Out, and also number six, council members looking to pull any items?
Mr. Mayor, we have a presentation from the chief of police for.
Or, hold on, hold on, I didn't see that, one more. Oh, all right, that's fine, let's go ahead and go over to the, sorry about the, Police Department, thank you, Vice Mayor. Police Department presentation of body cameras and crime statistics by interim chief of police Lopez. All right, so at this point, Chief, sir, good evening.
Good evening, honorable mayor and vice mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me this time to talk to you about the updates on the body worn video, and I have a little short presentation here on PowerPoint. So if you go to the next slide, please. We're talking about looking at three vendors, we're in our third phase of looking at our next vendor, which is Lens Lock. Look at, like I said, Axon and WatchGuard. If you look at, look at the study by RealPD, RealPD has shown an 88% reduction in complaints against officers. And a 60% reduction in use of force by officers when the body worn, body worn cameras are used. You know, as you, you could tell by the transparency and the accountability factor, body worn camera is, is a positive tool all around. And also, you know, you capture critical evidence, and one of the things that's noteworthy is that we had a homicide-suicide incident that we were able to capture. The entry into the location and. The scene, the crime scene itself, so that really helped investigators piece together the incident and also some of the things that they, that we needed to identify as evidence. We're also in the process of start to look at policies relative to the use of body worn video and the releasing of the video and, and how officers are to use it and the type and manner that they're going to use. I might remind that, that body worn video doesn't capture everything, not everything that the human eye can see, so if an officer is looking to the right or to the left. Again, the camera positioned on the center of the chest, either by mag or by a clip, and it's, you know, it turns as the body turns. So, you know, it does not capture when the, when the officer turns his head, but it does capture straight ahead. You know, the other piece to this is the infrastructure that's required. The, a lot of this videos is kept in the cloud, and so we have access to it, but then again, there's also things that we have to do when we start. Sharing the video with, with the public is that we have to do some redacting in the faces and biases placed and those kind of things, so that it'll take some time and it might also. biases placed and those kind of things, so that it'll take some time and it might also take some hiring of some additional people here at the, at the department in order to get that done. Couple of things that we did capture in body worn video, and if you go to the next slide. Please, this is, we had a gentleman who was a subject of suicide, he wanted to commit suicide, and this is the overpass at the Ballpark Boulevard, and he's, he is hanging there, just barely hanging on to the screen, the fence. Our officers got there and were able to deescalate the situation, which I was very proud of their, their abilities and contacted this individual, we had prior contacts with him, so they did have a relationship with the gentleman. Next slide, please. And that's, you know, again, that's showing, again, the redaction portion that we, we need to do in order to for the privacy of our, of individuals, but you can see that he's just about over the, over the freeway and we were unable to stop, get the highway patrol to stop traffic on the freeway. Next slide, please. And here is one of our officers actually assisting the gentleman off, off this, the fence and back down onto where we could get, take him into custody, and next slide. Yeah, okay, and that was, that was the end of that slide. This is another incident where an individual had thrown Molotov cocktails at two officers. So this picture doesn't depict the two officers that were standing in the position where these Molotov cocktails were paused. But as you can see, one of our police cars caught fire. There's another, if you look by the little blue circle, there is a fire in the street, that's a first Molotov cocktail he threw. This is the one on the car, it's the second one. Thankfully, next, before you go to the next slide, the, in that one slide, yes, that slide the, one of the neighbors came out and actually extinguished the fire on, on the police car, which helped save the car from going up in flames. Next slide. This is the individual that was throwing the Molotov cocktails. As you can see, and this is the, the beauty of these cameras, is that you can see the taser wires from the officer's taser, because the individual had reached into his waistband and heard away from the officers. In, in essence, incident that could have resulted in lethal force, however, the de-escalation and the process that the officers used, which is outstanding, prevented that from going, from occurring and going into, going further. So he was taken into custody without further incident. Next slide. And then again, like I spoke about earlier, the murder mayhem suicide that we were able to record, obviously, I was not going to show that to you, but we did record it, information from the crime scene and were able to meet up with the sole survivor of this attack. And that, that's, if there's any questions relative to body worn, I can entertain them now or at the end of my presentation.
Alright, Chief, okay, the LAPD, do they use that Ax, the Axon?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff's Department as well?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the reason why, I had an opportunity on Monday to actually see that, and I guess they're not all fully carrying it, but there was this one demonstration, so I had an opportunity to see that, that, that particular camera, so it was very, very unique, and I'm glad you demonstrated here, so I'm just curious, I think that, you know, for, for my opinion, I think that we should definitely have the top camera, and that would be this Axon one that has a lot. Have we met up with those vendors as well? I'd imagine you guys have, or?
Yes, sir, we, we've met with the two vendors so far, the, the first two was Axon and WatchGuard, we're in the process of outfitting another car of, from Lens Lock to take a look at their product. There are some agencies that surround us that have looked at it, I believe Almonte is in the process of putting that system into place. Again, Axon is, does both LAPD and the sheriffs, and it is a remarkable camera, it does capture about a, I believe it's a hundred and forty degrees of view, angle view, so it does, it does do a great job. And, and it, like I said, it's, it helps not only for the accountability of the officers, but also make sure that, you know, when we're dealing with our, the public, that, that the exchange of information or the exchange of comments are captured for both good or bad.
Absolutely, absolutely, council members have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Chief, and the rest of your team that's been, you know, testing these, and of course, the officers that are you know, testing and using these and going through that process. Do you have, can you tell us what the next phase will be as to when the department will be done reviewing and assessing and providing a report back to the council as to moving forward with the, the next phase of the body cams?
Yes, sir, we're, we're looking at thirty days of evaluation, so each, each under has had thirty days for us to evaluate their product, and that, you know, so that we can determine viability, the, all the options that are included with like redaction, storage, infrastructure and those kind of things that we have to evaluate, make sure that, that, you know, the bids are competitive and we look at, at cost for the city, and that, you know, it's, obviously, it's, it's going to be costly, but again, it, it outweighs anything when you're, when you're talking about accountability and transparency.
No, I agree, that's one of the reasons for, I think, when we were talking about this a few months ago, we, you know, we had the full council support to at least begin the conversation around trans, true transparency, and this is certainly one of those first steps, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chief, you know, when I talked to the, the actual sergeant that was doing the demonstration out here where I was at, and it would, they were also saying that the, the company Axon was also offering tasers, some kind of, some kind of deal that went along with that, so it checked with them as well, because my, my, my whole thing is that we could get bang for our buck and, you know, providing tasers as well replaces someone's ones we have, I think that'd be ideal.
Yes, sir, we do have tasers now, but we, we will take a look at that and look at all the available options each vendor can, can offer for the city, and I think you're, you're very, very well taken.
Yeah, and you know what, yeah, no, I'm definitely aware that we have tasers, but from my understanding that they offer that to, as a part of some of the deals, depending on how.
Yes, sir.
But the, the main key thing that I did learn out of it is that Axon is very encrypted, and it also offers the iCloud server, which I think may be different than the other one, so that's the reason, well, again, that's the only one I saw Axon, so I was very extremely impressed, but the individual that was doing that short presentation indicated that they're the only ones that have the actual, that provide that iCloud server at a, at a much larger capacity compared to some of the others, and I can't remember, I, I think I have that paperwork, and I'll send it to you if I locate it.
Please, and, and again, the capacity, because, you know, obviously, this is a smaller department than LAPD or the sheriffs, so ours is going to be huge for those two departments, we will have quite a bit of video, you know, that will be able to have to store, so again, you're right, you're absolutely right, we need to take a look at the storage capabilities of the, of the vendors, make sure that they can handle what we're, what we're projecting, especially when you look for call search service you know, from last year to this year, you know, those are the things that I'm looking at as well to judge or gauge the process.
Thank you, alright, you know, the, it was mentioned about the study that was conducted up in Rialto, and that's, that's a very distinguished police chief, Dr. I lost his name.
Kling.
I mean, Dr., I was going to mention someone else, yeah, Dr. Mark Kling, so, and doctor, of course, besides being the chief doctor, so, sounds like someone probably did their thesis there, so, I just want to acknowledge that.
Yes, sir.
Excellent, alright, well, thank you, thank you very much, Chief, and keep us apprised. Yeah, oh, sorry about that, yes, council member Monica Garcia.
Thank you, so I just want to reiterate what the chief mentioned in his comments, and I think it's important to repeat it a few times because of the whole Black Lives Matter, and, you know, everything that has happened this year. The reason why we are allocating these funds to the police department for this purpose is to, you know, again, focus on accountability, and we want, we want our police department, we want our city to be accountable to the community, and having these cameras, you know, it, it does allow us to be more accountable, but it also allows us to review incidents that come into question, and, you know, we can learn from them, and we can we can gain best practices, or we can make improvements or modifications, you know, based on whatever incidents may occur. So I think, I, I felt like it was worth repeating that, because I don't want anybody to think that we're just throwing more money at the police department. This is, this is a part of, you know, again, that accountability to the community, so, just wanted to repeat that a few times. I thought it was worth mentioning, so thank you, thank you, Chief, for that presentation.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, if not at this point, thank you, excellent presentation, Chief, we look forward to further information, thank you.
We still have more, sir.
Yes, sir. A little bit more, just, this is relative to crime statistics, and just want to go to the next slide, please.
Thank you.
Again, we're trying, trying to be very basic, because we're still in the process of updating our system. Our system has a different process that we're trying to narrow down, so these are just some crime stats for you to take a look at as far as twenty eighteen versus twenty nineteen, and taking a look at the, the crime stats for those period of time, and looking at the, at the public crimes versus violent crime. If you go to the next slide. Here's, here's, this, this is, for me, is a little, little busy for it to be deciphered, and so that's why I'm trying to present to the city council, and we should be able to present a better statistical report, so it's easier to read, and especially for the public. I want the public to understand that this is what, how the police department functions, and this is the things that we focus on, and one of the things I really want to drill down to a little bit better is is how we patrol and how we address specific crimes. Right now, I, I, I'm trying to drill down as far as the, the the hotspots, so to speak, or locations where crime is occurring, and we need to focus our patrol assets and whatever other assets that we need to do, whether it be quality of life, those kind of crimes, or quality crime, quality of life crimes, where we have a better impact, and including, you know, working with the community, so we're both working in sync with improving ballpark community, so, again, I apologize, these are the stats that we're producing from through record. Do have, like I said, we do have Spelman that has a, a very robust piece that we can look at, but I think it's way too cumbersome for us to deal with it right now, so we have been, myself, Commander Hofford, our, our records clerk and some other folks have been involved, involved with looking at improving this process. I think I've mentioned in one of my reports to the, to the council that one of my CSOs, she's, she works for Detective Bureau, she's actually, I'm going to send her to school to actually be our, our crime analyst, so that way I can kind of alleviate records from doing this process as far as stats, and actually have somebody who's, who will understand stats and provide us a better picture, a better look at where crime is being, where crime is occurring, and our solutions to the crime that we're, that we're, should be paying attention to. So, next slide. And here's, here's the snapshot for July of twenty nineteen versus July of twenty twenty. Again, due to this, the, the lack of personnel that I have in records, we are a little bit behind in our reporting to the FBI our statistic report, so this is where we're at, we're at this point right now, where this is where we're at, and again, if you look at the, at the, at the number of crimes, we're about even, you know, we're up a little bit in, in violent crime from twenty nineteen, and however property crimes are down twenty, twenty-seven percent, so that's, it's gives you a good indication of how we are, how we're doing, but I'd like to do a little bit better, I, I, I want to do better in, in how we present this to the public and to the commission, or, I'm sorry, the council, I'm used to saying that for the LAPD.
No, that's fine, Chief.
Alright, I believe that was the last slide, so if there's any oh, again, here's our, here's the statistical report that reflects the, the numbers, the actual numbers. And I just highlighted so you could, you could see that, see the differences. Again, a twenty-three percent reduction in total Part One crimes, and then, and then, we have, we have enough, at least if you look at the, the arrests for violent crime, we're up seventeen percent, so that's a good sign that we are focusing, our officers are focusing on the violent crime, and they're doing a good job of making those arrests. Next slide. That, that was the last slide.
Yeah, well, Chief, first of all, thank you for the presentation, it's important that we move in the direction of establishing an actual crime analysis unit, other departments have it, and there's no reason why we can't, or a resident asks for immediate stats regarding the various types of crimes throughout the city, so thank you very much for places and placing us in the path of creating an actual crime analysis unit, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, at this point, the council members, do they have any questions?
Yes, no, thank you again very much, Chief, and your staff for, for providing these stats, as you mentioned. It was up by, you know, four percent for major crimes, or Part One crimes, but, you know, the reality is it's only four. You know, the numeric number is only an increase of four, so as we, you know, present the information, we want to make sure that the audience in our community truly understands, you know, what, you know, what percentages means, or how they are translated when, when it comes to statistical analysis when it, for crime stuff. You know, the one thing I'll ask is, you know, we spoke about it a few months back, is would appreciate if we can get, you know, another update from our domestic violence coordinator to see how we're doing in that area. I, you know, looking at your stats, it looks like we're down, but, you know, one of the things that we asked of her last time when she spoke to us, was a tracking, you know, how many people were calling in, how many she was assisting, so if she could provide us with either a verbal report or a written, more preferably a written report, we'd appreciate that, and then we can schedule, you know, a time for her to present her document or her findings.
Absolutely, we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, council members have any further questions?
You know what, Mayor, I mean, since we're on this topic, you know, this is, this is something I've been asking for, for many years, and so thank you, Chief, I've been asking for like a comstat style of reporting. And my thinking behind that was, you know, it's so, it's, it's so that we could track what is happening in our city and deploy resources based on those trends. And so I'm glad to hear that, yes, we are trying to present this information in, you know, in a, in a way that our community can receive it and understand it where it's more transparent, so thank you for working on that. I, I do appreciate it. Can you tell us what those crimes were? This, you know, this year, the four that were mentioned, was that the murder-suicide involving the domestic situation?
Well, it's, it's, it's across the board, so if you take a look at the, at the, at the, at the twenty twenty versus twenty nineteen, you take a look at the crimes, the, it just depends on, on the number of crimes, so you like, you know.
I'm just, I'm referring to the four, the four crimes that, that Mayor Portem mentioned.
Those actual crime, the four crimes that, that are, they're the four percent crimes, or the
Okay.
Mayor said, so I'd have to drill down for you, for you, and I'll get that for you, so you can understand the, where the crimes are.
I think it's important when we talk about crimes, I think it's also important to talk about, you know, the you know, what type of, what, what, what we're talking about, because I wouldn't want our, our community to think that you know, somebody's going to just bust into their house and start shooting at them or something like that, you know, it's important how we communicate to the community about, about any crimes that are happening, so you know, like I said, I do appreciate that we're embarking on this, that you're taking the leadership on this, I know for years I've been asking about comstat, you know, type, type of
A process?
Tracking, of tracking, right, of tracking, so that, again, it's really about how we deploy resources so that we can get ahead of some of the trends that are out there. But anyway, without, without, you know, belaboring this, I think what we can do is we can just bring it back at a later time, and yeah, we can, we can fill in some of the blanks, I just don't want our community to, to think that you know, that they're unsafe in any way.
Actually, not, we're, we're doing pretty good in violent crime and, and property crime, again, it's, it's, the numbers are deceiving, or the percentages are deceiving because of the numbers that, that we actually projecting. The, my hope is that, as I drill down a little further and, and make a better activity report for, for you, for the, not only for you, but for, for our community, is that it's understandable, they understand that, that the crime, if it's, we're up to crimes, or let's say it's a homicide, and we're up by two, that's going to be about Or let's say it's a homicide and we're up by two, that's gonna be about a hundred percent increase. It, it's, any death is alarming, but the, but the trend is, there's not, there's not a trend. So those are the, kind of improving our, our trend analysis, our, our, especially when we're talking about location analysis, uh, and our, and our resources, how we're deploying assets, you know, the daytime versus nighttime, just an overall process. And like you, you mentioned, uh, comstat, that's where I came from, is a, a place that was very rich in comstat. And, and again, providing you numbers of, you know, our statistics, where, or whether we're, are citations, everything, everything related to, police department, uh, operations, I'll be able to give you something along those lines so that you have a better understanding of, of what it, what it is. We, uh, the officers do on a daily basis. So you understand the safety and the things that they're doing to protect the, the community, uh, here in Baldwin Park.
Uh-huh, yeah. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
I'll go ahead and share, uh, when they did this, this presentation, uh, just so everyone know. Um, it was a, um, part of it, it was reported that crime, domestic crime has been up, uh, throughout the county of Los Angeles. And the officer, I forget where he was from, uh, they indicated that due to COVID nineteen unemployment, people are home. So that's created stress, it's a tremendous tension. So the crime has been, uh, has been, uh, or has increased in, in, uh, throughout the county. And, and again, we have to recognize that, uh, we're basically, you know, closed out in, in many sectors. So it does create that, uh, that stressful, uh, period when you're at home or, or unemployed. Uh, and things that, that mount up. So, uh, I just wanted to share that because that was also part of this, uh, this, this presentation that, that I attended. All right, all right. So thank you very much, and Chief, thank you very much for that presentation.
Thank you.
All right, so what we'll do at this point is, uh, we're going into the consent calendar. I have requested to pull out item five and six. Council members wishing to pull any items?
Mr. Mayor, can we pull item four, please?
Item four.
Mayor, I also want to pull item number seven.
Number seven, alrighty. Right, so at this point, I will, I will go ahead and move to, uh, approve the, um, consent calendar with the exception of items of, uh, four, five, six, and seven. That is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by council member Monica Garcia. Any objections? See none, so move. Right, the one, uh, item number five, which is the city jail operation. Uh, it reads, uh, staff recommends that the city council approve the temporary closure, uh, of the Baldwin Park City Jail and approve the attached agreement between the cities of Ballpark and Almani for booking and housing the Ballpark arrestees at Almani. I just want to say that I oppose this and I, I, I definitely do not want to see this. Uh, we need to maintain our jail. Our jail was built when City Hall was open in nineteen seventy-eight. If we were to shut this, this jail now, then we will have to comply with the twenty-first century, uh, um, modifications of that jail, which would run in the hundreds and thousands of dollars. I, I know, I, I, I am adamant, uh, uh, that we, uh, maintain this and not outsource it. I actually called the company, I, I called the company and they're willing to extend it until November the second. I want to make sure that we look at this, assess it further. I, I, I'm gonna oppose this adamantly. It's important for us to be able to book, uh, the individuals here in Baldwin Park as opposed to going elsewhere. Uh, you know, time, uh, that, that'll be wasted from patrolling the cities. And the jail, the actual, um, jail, um, that we've had in Baldwin Park has, has been, has been successful. And of course, times have changed, but, uh, I want to keep our, our jail. So at this point, I'm.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, council, council member.
Um, again, I'm not sure of any retrofitting that needs to be occurring, but I, I appreciate a little bit more discussion around this particular item, uh, before we take a vote on it. So if we could ask staff to brief us on this at our next meeting. Uh, so I could have a much more, uh, better informed information from staff as to what the retrofits would cost and so forth. Because I know there is a, uh, there is a cost associated with this and that's, you know, the cost associated with, uh, officers going to, uh, another department. But I also recognize, uh, you know, the cost of operating this might, might exceed, uh, what needs to happen. But before we get, before I can get to that point, I'd like to have, uh, further information before we do that.
Okay, all right, that, that's just fine. I just wanna, I just want to say for the record that I'm going to oppose it adamantly, uh, that we continue. I just want that for the record. All right, so at this point, uh, and I, and I believe that was the instructions the last time for us to look at, at, well, never mind, we'll, we'll bring, we'll bring this back. So at this point, I'll make a, this point, I will go ahead and make a motion to bring, uh, the city jail operation, uh, back to the following meeting. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
See none, so move. All right, item number six, which is approving the allocation of CARES Act Housing Choice.
Mayor?
Yes.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but can we ask that that item come to us in a study session so that we can get more briefing on it? Um, and maybe what we can do is we can look at the, possibly like the first week of November for the jail.
Okay, all right.
And, and during the study session, just so that we have more time to ask questions.
Alrighty, that's, that, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. And then I think you skipped to number four, number four.
Oh, I did, sorry about that. Okay, number four, sorry about that, council member. The ratifying adopt the resolution to update the city ballpark job classification by, plans by deleting, uh, two public work supervisor position and adding a new position to public works maintenance operations manager and approve updates to the city ballpark's comprehensive pay schedule in accordance with the Cal, hers established guidelines. Council member.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to pull this meeting, uh, pull this item so we could, uh, just have this back at our next meeting. Um, or the meeting after that, so we could have a further discussion in regards to, uh, the positions in the closed session, please.
Yes. Okay, so at this point, uh, you want to entertain a motion to bring that back?
Yes, uh, I'd like to pull this item, item four, uh, for our next meeting, um, or in early November. So we can have further discussion in regards to how, uh, the ratification, uh, and the changes, uh, being proposed, uh, will affect our employees and services in our community. That is my motion.
All right, is there a second? I'll go ahead.
I'll second.
Okay, second, council member. Monica Garcia, any objections? See none, so move. All right. Sorry about that, I skipped that item, uh, six, which is the approving allocations of, of, of CARES Act Housing Choice voucher program. Uh, administrative funding in the amount of two hundred and forty-seven thousand. So I, I just want to share, I want to thank staff, Ben Martinez and everyone that, uh, was behind this. Um, it's very important for us to, uh, uh, report this out to the residents of Ballpark that two hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-one will be used, to assist in, in vouchers. So, uh, uh, thank you very much. At this point, that's the only thing I just want to cover. I'll go ahead and make a motion to pass item six.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor. Any objections? See none, so move. All right, this one will go to item seven, uh, requested by council member. This is Vice Mayor of Paul Hernandez. He approved California Choice Energy Authority entering into a long-term resources, uh, adequacy, uh, agreement with the Alpine Energy Service LP on behalf of the Ballpark Residence Own Utilities. So, sorry about this, council member, Monica Garcia.
Okay, thank you. You know, this is such an important item. Um, and I just was wondering if we can, push it to the next meeting so that we have the full council present. Um, just because it, it does, you know, it, it is an important decision for our city. And I think if there are any questions or comments or anything like that to be made before we take this action, I think, you know, it's, it's important that we all have the opportunity. So if there is no issue with the timeline, can we take this up at the next council meeting when everyone is present?
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree.
Ben, is this, uh, is this item time sensitive?
Um, Kathy DeFalco from Cal Choice could probably help us answer that question the best. Kathy?
It could come back in two weeks.
Is Kathy there?
Kathy? Maybe she's on mute.
I don't, I don't see her on there.
I see her.
Oh, here she is, she is. Kathy? Here's, I see her there. Kathy, can you hear us?
I can hear you, hold on.
Hi Kathy, so at this point, the question by council member Monica Garcia, can, can this be brought back in two weeks?
It is time sensitive. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, yes.
Thank you, city. Good evening, uh, mayor and council members. Uh, so the way that the, uh, Cal Choice operates as far as our procurements, we do them collectively. So there are actually seven CCAs that have grouped together. And this procurement is one of those seven. They're all going forward with the final approval being done, um, October thirteenth. And at that point in time, the intention was to execute all of the agreements. There is a, um, mandatory obligation that we provide all of our contracts to the California Public Utilities Commission for our twenty twenty-one resource adequacy requirements by the end of October. So if we delayed it by two weeks, it would, it would, um, it, we would be pushing up pretty close to that timeline. So I, I would be concerned about pushing it out for two weeks. I, I do.
And Kathy, this is Shannon. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this doesn't really change anything in the program. This is just the group purchasing power to show the state of California that we have the adequacy to supply the contracts that were already entered in. Is that correct?
That, that, that is correct. This is, um, a contract with generators that show, um, we're, we're doing our share to provide resiliency to the grid. So it, it's a requirement to, to basically show, um, grid stability. So, um, yeah, it is, um, considered in the financials. It, uh, is part of the program. It's, uh, it's been planned for, it's in the operational studies and the financial modeling.
And Shannon, um, what council action did we take prior to tonight?
So there've been a long history of, of council actions, um.
Yes, I know.
Probably about, about a year, um, to, you know, to, the, I think the final decision to create Be Proud was about a year ago.
Okay, and we were all present, right?
Yeah, so since then, we've been implementing those changes. Right, so this is really, um, almost a ministerial action. And like I said, it doesn't change anything in the program. It just shows the state of California that we have the resources available to, um, serve the district.
Okay, I, so this is just the formality really, because, um, I just wanted to make sure that we all had the opportunity to, at, you know, before the action was taken, uh, to chime in. But as long as, I do remember when we moved forward with the plan. Um, but I wanted to make sure that that, that was an action that was taken. And that we all, as, you know, every council member had the opportunity to chime in.
Correct. Um, and I know there are questions from residents. I know Ben's gonna be getting out some additional social media on that just so that they understand the issue. Um, and some additional notices are, are gonna be going out. We've also been receiving some phone calls of Ben and staff. Um, and Cal Choice have also been answering all of the questions of the residents that call in. So I would encourage anybody that has questions, uh, to go to our website and, and call that number.
Okay. Okay, that's fine. Um, I think that, that's fine. I mean, does anybody else have any questions on this item?
No questions.
Okay, so then I'll just go ahead and make the, uh, the motion to approve.
All right, is there a second? I'll move, I'll second. Any objections? See none, so move. Thank you very much, council member. Alrighty, this one will go over to item, reports of officers, item ten, which is the approving adopt resolution, number twenty twenty dash zero four six entitled, a resolution of the city council of the city ballpark, appointing representatives. Alternative, can we skip this over, uh, um, customs, so let's move this over to the following meeting, okay?
That would be fine.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to move this over to the following meetings. Is there a second? Any objections? See none, no. All right, so, uh, then we'll go over to, um, uh, this, uh, Maya at the end?
Uh, Mayor, yeah, did you close? There was nothing to report out. Did you close the study session?
No, so allow me to make that. At this point, uh, there is, you do not have anything to report out from study session. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to close. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any objections? See none, so move. All right, so at this point, council member, we do have the, uh, finance, nor the housing. That was the only city council, uh, meeting. But at this point, council members have anything they wish to share, we go, we want to adjourn them.
I, yeah.
Who's the council member? Ayala?
Yes.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of things I'd like to point out. First of all, um, from our study session earlier this evening, I would, um, like to acknowledge, um, Director Burn, uh, Ben Martinez, uh, for his update on the community development department, especially in regards to the vouchers, the community housing program, all of the new developments that are coming in. Also, uh, his reference to our new housing projects, both affordable and market rate. Um, I just want to thank you, Ben, and your group, because I know that they're working diligently to, um, provide us these wonderful options for our residents as well as all of our community. And I just want to encourage everybody to take, um, if it, if it benefits them to, to, um, look at the rental assistance, um, program as well as the business assistance. Because I know that deadline will be coming up on Monday. We had discussed that. So thank you, Ben, um, for all of that. I really appreciate everything that your department does. I also want to, um, thank those callers who, uh, called in support of, of our public works department and their efforts. So, um, I really, uh, appreciate that. Lastly, I just want to publicly acknowledge, um, little kudos to, um, a good friend of mine, um, Maron and mine, who, uh, works out of the Baldwin Park Boxing Club, who, uh, his name is Jose Chonesa Peta, who on Saturday, uh, had a remarkable fifth round knockout, um, to win the, uh, silver lightweight bout, um, against now, he's the number one contender for the WBC. So I just want to give a shout out to Jose Chonesa Peta, and we're very proud of him and all that he represents for the city of Baldwin Park and the Ballpark Boxing Club.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you. Before, I, I forgot to also close, uh, former, uh, council, former council member and also city attorney at one time, Mr. David Olivas's father, Michael Olivas, uh, passed, uh, about a week and a half ago. So our deepest condolences goes out to him, who was also my mentor when I first came on the city council. So our condolences goes out to his family. All right, council members wishing to report anything out?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, want to thank, uh, you know, public works, uh, department, uh, Sam Geteras and John, uh, from the team over there and everyone else that helped, uh, launch, uh, you know, our bike sharing program. I believe it was last Thursday.
Oh, yeah.
In partnership with the San Gabriel Valley Council of, uh, Governments and of course, activist GB. So again, thank you very much for that, um, and, uh, you know, looking forward to, uh, you know, as, as we mentioned, the press bike launch, uh, we're the second city, um, I think South Elmani was the first one. Um, and I know this will be extended over to another thirteen more cities, I think going all the way out to Laverne. So people will be able to enjoy, uh, some alternative, uh, transportation options, uh, here in the San Gabriel Valley, but also here in Baldwin Park. Um, and it's another way to, you know, not only, uh, obtain, uh, you know, exercise, but also explore, um, our beautiful city and our surrounding, uh, neighbors. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, so if not at this point, I will go ahead and make a motion, uh, to adjourn the city council meeting. That's my motion.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor, uh, Paul Hernandez. Any objections? See none, so move. At this point, good evening, everyone, and viva Baldwin Park. Have a good one.
Night, everyone.
Good night, viva Baldwin Park.
Night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, Mr. Mayor, Mr.